Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September meeting of the town of the Kipsey Zoning Board of Appeals. Could please rise the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
Hi.
All right, thanks.
To the other. Under my individual with the rage of justice for all.
Christine.
Here.
Art, I'm not here. Here, Alice.
Here.
Linda.
Here.
And I'm Tony, I'm filling in for Chairman Paul Leahy this evening. We have a hybrid format this evening, we have nobody in the audience, it looks like everybody's on Zoom tonight. The agendas are posted on the website when it's interested. Format is that we'll call each applicant up in order of how it's on the agenda. We'll ask them questions and allow them to present what their application is about. Or they'll ask questions. That'll be the open forum to ask questions, we'll close it out. Time we cover all agenda items. We will close the open meeting and the board will deliberate to come to a final decision. So you have a very short agenda, so.
Fifty three.
Wait. Uh. Um. Starting with number one, the head application has been withdrawn. So.
Do you have anything for that?
No.
They don't care, right?
We're also. So number two, sixty, sorry, two twenty-one Beechwood Avenue. There's been a request to adjourn that to October twentieth. That doesn't have to be second there.
Uh, yeah, I think we should do a motion in a second to adjourn.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to adjourn that to the October twentieth meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion is carried. That brings us to number four. Sixty-two Van Wick Drive.
Wait, number three?
Oh, sorry. Three.
Three.
Number three, number three.
Bridge. Here. Three is going to. It's also going to be adjourned until in October.
That's right, okay. So number three, um. Two Pendell Road, that has also been requested to be adjourned to October twentieth. So I make a motion to adjourn that to the October twentieth meeting.
Second.
Any of, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right? Any opposed? That motion carries. Now, number four, sixty-two Van Wick Drive. Is anybody here for that?
Zoom.
Foster.
If you're on the Zoom and you're here for sixty-two Van Wick Drive, if you wanna. Unmute. You can back that up.
Okay, yeah. In a second, Paul. Um. J D nut number four. Number five.
Yep.
Eighty-nine Kensington. Uh, that's been adjourned to, right? So.
Yeah.
Okay.
To October.
So there's been a request to adjourn that October twentieth meeting.
True. Sure, listen.
Number.
All right.
This is different. Yeah. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you.
We need a motion in a second. Yeah, well, just, just, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. I made the motion. And I'll second it then. I make a motion to adjourn it to October twentieth meeting, I still second it, okay? Art, second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion is carried. So that brings us to number six. Twenty-two. Henman Boulevard. Not here for that?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Yeah. Yeah.
Please state your name and we'll swear you in.
Katsatina Lake of.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, do you mind explaining what the application's about?
Uh, extend the second floor, so right now it's, uh, two bedrooms on the second floor of the house, uh. Really uncomfortable because of the structure of the attic. So we applied for, um. Uh, to extend the walls, make like, uh, place more livable. And during the zoning approval, it was found that in nineteen ninety-two, the previous owner. Applied for variance that brings them seventeen feet instead of twenty to the next residence. So we're asking for variance. To actually add the second floor to the house.
You know about what year was that, um, constructed?
Uh. Give me one second, I believe it was built in fifties, just one minute, I'll tell you. One second, I'm checking the public. It was built in nineteen forty-five.
The variance is just to make that legalized for the existing structure, not adding anything additional to it, correct?
Correct.
All right. No.
The house had a. House had a originally built with a garage. At one point, they converted the garage to living space. When they did that, the setbacks at the time, when you took away the garage, had stricter setbacks at the time. So then they had to get the variance.
But it's the garage that's been there for a while that they're looking to close.
But now, well, they, they don't have to legalize it, that was already done, so now they're going to build. A second story on the original structure, not the garage, which sits seventeen feet from the property lines, and they need a three-foot variance.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Alice.
How is it that there's a stop building sign on, is, is, I think it's on the property, am I right about that? Perhaps I was at the wrong one.
They must have been given a stop work order by the building department. That's probably what spurred this denial.
First place, okay, thank you.
Is there any questions?
No questions.
Sound public hearing, great.
Confirm further questions for the applicant. Uh, is there any questions from? Anybody in Zoom?
Yeah, so this is a public hearing, right, so anyone on this Zoom who wishes to comment on the application of twenty-two Henman Boulevard?
Uh, so I just wanna know which way is it being extended, is it the back of the house, is it to either side of the other houses?
Yeah, so we, I think we need to just swear you in, if that's okay, hold on one second, so what's your name?
Sure. Uh, Amara.
Okay.
Amara.
Do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to know which way it was being extended.
It's just going up.
Straight up.
Straight up, over the.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, upward, okay.
Yeah.
Not going additional anywhere else, uh, based on this.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going either way, or which, or, you know, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anyone else on the Zoom for this application, twenty-two Henman?
Okay. So I move to pose the public hearing for item number six. If it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion is carried. Okay.
So, um, you can stay on if you'd like and, uh, right, or, uh, and wait for the deliberation later on, or. And just call the zoning office in the morning if you would rather. Just wait till then, it's up to you. All right?
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Somebody said hi.
It was the person on.
Oh. That's. So that brings us to item number seven, sixty-seven Hillis Terrace. Is anybody here for that?
Yes, hello.
Hello, I'm the neighbor fifty-nine Hills.
Okay, hold on, let's get the applicant first. Is the applicant for sixty-seven Hillis Terrace on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, now we hear you, yep, okay.
Thank you, sorry.
What's, what's your name?
Lauren Correll.
Lauren, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, absolutely.
Explain the application to us, please.
Yes, uh, so ultimately, we just want a variance of one foot. On the front of our property to add a fence to ensure that our dog is maintained on the property. And I can go into further detail if needed, but, you know, I didn't know how this process was gonna go, so.
Yeah, if you go into further detail, I think some questions came up when we were on a field trip, there was a map that we were provided that. Had references to colors, I think blue and yellow, but we didn't have that, it was black and white.
Oh, yeah, that was the map that my husband provided of the layout of our property, um, just to, you know, show you where the fence would be, um. But, uh.
We had a survey done.
Yeah, we had a survey done, a formal survey done on the property, which outlined our property line to ensure that we would be building our fence, you know. One foot back from each. Uh, of our neighbors and to ensure that it's where it needs to be, where the road is located as well. Uh, but ultimately, the reason why we're asking for the additional variance is because, um. Like I said, this would help ensure that our dog stays within our property line, our dog can jump four feet, so anything less is insufficient. Uh, we have tried training techniques, leads, and then visible fence, but they have been ineffective. Our dog also suffers from anxiety and because of this requires frequent mental and physical stimulation. This is very difficult to do when space is restricted. Our backyard is very small and taken up by our deck. Our landscape also has a very steep drop a few feet from the deck, so this limits her area of play. The front has more space for her to play, um. But she's easily distracted by those walking their dogs or other animals that run through the property. The fence will ensure she stays on the property and that she does not disrupt wildlife or those passing by either foot or vehicle. Uh, to give more clarity on the volume of our location, uh, we have two offshoot roads connected to Vassar Road. Our community houses over two hundred homes, our specific area is right next to a loop. Of thirty-seven homes that primarily use our section for entry and exit. Our road has a sharp uphill blind turn right before our driveway, as Doug, who's. In this meeting can confirm, since his home is actually right at that curve. Uh, visibility is limited when crossing the street and can be dangerous. We also have a pocket park in the neighborhood, which draws additional users. Uh, our home is also part of a walking loop and generally has children playing on the road. In your May seventh meeting, you discussed the volume of children playing on our street in our neighborhood specifically. Um, so distractions are present. Uh, we hope this is sufficient enough to grant the variance, but overall, this will help our dog's quality of life, as well as ensure our neighbors have. An uninterrupted walking and driving experience.
Yeah, Ken, so is, so you're proposing that the four-foot fence go around the entire perimeter of the property?
So my husband is here as well, I don't know if you wanna spur him in, um, so he can speak to that?
Sure.
Yeah, hi, Chris Correll.
Hi, Chris, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. Um, as far as the fence is concerned, it's just, we're looking to put that four and a half aluminum fence up in the front. Uh, so it'd be basically going around the entire front of our property. Uh, the fence permit application that I submitted, which is something separate and does not require events, uh, a variance would be for the back of the art backyard. And it's gonna be a different fence in the back. But that doesn't do too much because there's also, it's a forty-foot drop in our backyard, so there's really no place for. Anything to move around.
Okay, and, and the fence that you're proposing in the front. Matches the, the sample that, that you provided to, uh, to the board, it looks like it's iron or metal.
Yeah, black, black aluminum fence.
Okay.
Black aluminum fence that has, uh, fence through it or areas through it to allow light coming through.
Great, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Art. If this is the one that's pictured here, I'm okay with it, no questions. So.
So you're proposing putting the fence where in the front, one foot from the road?
No, no, one, one foot from our property line, our property line on one side is about fifteen feet up from the road, and the other one is about ten feet back from the road. Uh, the survey basically showed that our property is at an angle to the road, and it doesn't really kind of run parallel with it.
I have no further questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
So fair to say that the, the fence would be approximately ten to twelve feet from the roof?
Yeah, it should be about that, depending on what part of our front yard, just because of the angle from it.
Okay. Then just.
Um. That answered my one question. Um, no, no, no question.
Okay.
Actually, did, you said you have a survey, um. We, I don't have a copy of it, did we get a copy of it?
I'm in an old survey. I had sent, emailed earlier a copy of an old survey that I had found, um, but we were never given a new survey.
So the new survey.
Pin down where the fence with, you know, where the property line is that they're talking about.
Yes, so, I'm sorry, what was that?
So we had the new survey done by Lynn, uh, they are still, they already mapped it out, but they still have not sent it to us, so that's why we couldn't include it in this, if you guys needed that. Um, cause the survey was, you know, it was just done a couple of weeks ago, but they did put the stakes down. And they formed us of the location, and they said they just have to submit it to you guys, so I assume they have not done that yet, but, um. You know, it, it should be published soon.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, I mean.
For our property, seven.
On giving the permit?
I'm sorry?
You mean wait for the survey before giving the permit?
Yeah, I mean, you should probably have the survey and, and, and just check that the property was staked out, you know, but. Yeah, but as far as the height of the fence, which is the question for the variance, that's, if the board is comfortable, they could certainly.
Yep.
So they're comfortable, we rule on that, and then that. Survey, okay.
Yeah, before this, before the fence permit is actually signed by Chris, yeah, or Christine.
You said the back fence was different than the front. What is that one like?
Uh, we don't actually have it decided on yet because we were waiting on the variance for the front first, to see if that's gonna be approved as a black metal fence.
Okay.
If it's denied and we only get a three-foot fence, then we're gonna have to change what we do. Cause I don't know of a three-foot fence that's black and aluminum like that.
Okay.
Okay. Hold up the Zoom for questions, I understand there's somebody. Yeah, it looks, there's a neighbor on, right, um.
Yeah, hi, Doug Feeny, next door.
Mr. Feeny, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. Uh, first of this, thank you for getting the survey, I appreciate that. And thank you so much for not, um, putting in a white scar. The black final, a bi, a black metal fence sounds awesome. I have no problems with height. Um, so if you guys need to work on the border that we share in terms like wiggle room or taking down some branches so that that fence doesn't get ruined, let's talk. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Feeny. Anybody else have any other comments on this application? Uh, okay. So I move to close this, uh, item number.
Six.
Six.
Seven.
Seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. That motion is carried. I have a thing, that's not, that's, that will be method, no, we really wanted to make sure that they're.
Okay.
Survey will come, I'm gonna do the.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, so that moves us to item number E, nine hundred Duchess Turnpike. Anybody here for that application?
Good evening, my name is Patrick Ruppel, I'm with K A R C.
Mr. Rebel, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Uh, could I, uh, present a presentation I have?
Uh, wait, hold on, did you hear, uh, what?
I was just, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Correct. Yeah, if you can share your screen.
Thank you. Can everybody see that? Yes, that's. Okay, um, I just wanted to quickly orient you guys with, uh, the location of the site, um, so we are proposing a wall sign. Uh, subject to town code section two-ten dash, uh, one-twenty-nine, which only allows one wall sign. Uh, we currently have that one wall sign here where, uh, number one is in red. It's an existing, uh, sixty-square-foot wall sign. We are looking to propose one to the rear, uh, which contains the employee slash visitor parking. There's currently no sign located there, this is where it is currently. Uh, and if you missed it, the site is located at nine hundred Duchess Turnpike, it's a fifty-eight-point-three acre industrial park located in the I H district. So as I mentioned, there is, uh, one song, wall sign that is permitted, uh, via the code. This is what we were proposing on the back. Here's just a little more detail, uh, it's four foot by fifteen foot, which is sixty square feet, it's not illuminated. Uh, and it's right on the center of the building above the employee entrance, which is where I'm circling right here. Just for reference, uh, we did receive a referral from county planning that it was a matter of local concern. And within the, uh, application package that you guys have, we did, uh, respond to the five-prong threshold test. Which we, uh, conclude that the benefits of the applicant outweighs the detriment to the community, as the sign is consistent with the character of its surroundings and is adequately screened from the surrounding areas. And directly faces an undevelopable Central Hudson utility line as shown below. And this would be the view from the building. And that's all I have, thank you.
Said it, Patrick, but what was the size of that sign?
Uh, that'll also be sixty square feet, so it'll be, here, I'll scroll back up, it'll be four feet by fifteen feet.
That sign will just read.
It'll just read Pacron, which is the, uh, the company's rebranding from A P Packaging to Pacron. Uh, so they have a, a permit to convert the existing sign to the same sign. Uh, which we, I believe we received in the beginning of August, and we are waiting to see if we get the area variance to put this sign on the backside of the building. Where the employee entrance is to just, you know, designate where, where it is, I mean, it's a large industrial building with many entrances used by many. Uh, different tenants that have, you know, their own signs that, that make access easy for their, you know, employees, visitors. Uh, so we're just looking to do the same on the backside.
And is this, is this entrance exit used by anybody other than employees, is it like a customer interest in the entrance as well?
Uh, yes, it's customer, visitor, employee, the front side has a door, but it's only used by, uh, you know, truckers who are coming in doing, you know, shipping and receiving.
And is there currently any kind of signage there, uh, to identify that?
No, there is not at this moment, this isn't, or, up here, this is an old, this is from, I believe it's twenty-twenty-one, I got this off of, uh, Google Street View. This is when they had the old Bosie signage. Cause this building used to be the old Bosie's building, but there is currently not any signage there now. To my knowledge.
That's all the questions that I have. Christine?
Okay, had you considered maybe putting the name of the, of the company on the awning?
So we looked in the code, uh, on section, neither right in front of me, section two-ten, one-twenty-nine. Uh, it signs permitted in the O R I H I L and Q districts, and it doesn't specifically list an awning, uh, like an awning sign. That is permitted in that district, the only signs it lists is freestanding and a one, one freestanding and one wall sign, uh, the site already has one freestanding at the street. And already currently has one wall sign, uh, on the front of the building with the loading docks are.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. No, so this is on pretty much the very backside of this building, correct, it's way out of sight of anybody?
Yes, correct, and it is shielded by, uh, I believe that side is adjacent to the overlooked driving range, and then there's a, uh, Central Hudson utility easement that goes through there that. Will, you know, be on developable, done undevelopable.
And you did say it's a, it's a non-illuminated sign, right, you had that there somewhere, there's no lighting of any type on it?
Yes, no lighting.
Okay, no, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Alice?
Um, if I could ask what Pacron does?
Uh, they, they create and manufacture like shipping products, bubble wrap, um, those air, you know, those giant air. Uh, pocket bubble things for boxes, uh, you know, different times, there's tape. Uh, I believe they also do boxes. So just, you know, packing, packing material.
And you've recently been doing some renovations, correct?
Yes, they have.
I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Linda, any question?
Uh, yes, I do. When I was out there, I saw there is a sign over a door that says employee entrance. And. I, I, I'm just wondering, is that the actual area where you wanna put the sign above it?
Uh, I, I'm not aware of that, I wasn't aware of that, um, maybe it was temporary in the meantime that they put up, um. Do you recall which doorway it was above, because there are multiple businesses on that backside?
It was in the back, and it said your company name, it said Pac, Pacron Employee Entrance. It was like on the wall.
Is it above this doorway here with the, the triangle instead of the normal awning?
I really can't see the picture's too small, but it was over a door. Um, yeah, I believe so, I believe so.
Uh, I, I was unaware of that, but, um, if, if that's what you saw, then I assume that would be correct.
And is there, and actually, since you said customers would be coming in the sign, it's not really, it said employee entrance, so really. Wouldn't be for customers that way. It is now.
So usually, you know, it's, it's rare that customers do come to the site, I mean, they're, it's mainly a manufacturing facility. Um, so I'm sure on rare occasions, customers come in or, or vendors that, you know, the, the property owners or the company owners. Uh, bring in, and then, you know, speaking onto the sign that, that you claim is there, this would replace that sign, I assume.
Is there any reason you can't put something on the, on the door? You know, like, um. To identify that at the entrance?
Uh, we, we just, the, the client was proposing the sign from a visibility standpoint, it, it is a large site, there's, you know, multiple businesses. That have signs, it's, it's, you know, it's a big loop around the, the building, so it's very easy to miss it. Uh, and the roadway is actually on the outer perimeter of, of the, you know, of the site. So, you know, if you're, if you're driving too fast, or you, you know, you, you might miss the sign on the door. So we were trying to get, you know, put something on the building so that it's, it's a little more clear. Uh, you know, also from a, from a safety standpoint, you know, for emergency responders and, and things of that nature, too.
No further questions.
Thank you.
Are any, you can stop sharing your screen, please. Uh, are there any questions or comments from the public? On Zoom? Okay, so I make a motion to conclude the public hearing for item number. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried.
Just go back and back on number four again, right?
Yeah, to the second call for the application for sixty-two then withdraw. I guess we, uh, can adjourn it to next month and see what happens, yeah. So I'll make a motion to adjourn that to the October twentieth, uh, meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. If they close the public hearing, I think. All in favor? That motion is carried. Really, we're jumping right down to numbers six, right? Yes. So here we have a existing dwelling, looking to build upon. It sounds like it's been there for a long time and I don't have any problems. Anyone have any concern? Okay. So find it. Yeah, so whether the desirable change will produce an undesirable, uh, um, will produce, um, will change the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Um, I don't think so. It's been there for a while. They're sort of improve it. Whether the benefit to, benefit could be whether the benefit could be sought from the applicant to achieve by a different method, um, feasible in a different way or variants, um, I don't think so. Adding this, this consistent with what's there. The area variance is substantial mathematically. I think technically it is, but it's just proving what is there, so it's substantial. With the proposed variance, it created adverse impact on physical environment. Uh, there's no evidence as such. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, yes, but, uh, they're just working with what's there, so. Right to those findings of two, record.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the acting chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion is carried. Number seven, Hillis Terrace, the fence variance. Um, I don't see any concerns with it based on the layout of the property and what they're looking to accomplish there. The only concern I have is that the distance from the road, that seems too far enough away. Can, can we, we, we make it based on the fences pictured, the open slot aluminum fence? The one that was. Since that's not blocking any view, when it's not blocking any, I think I wouldn't have a problem with the position upon that. And I believe you said that's putting the. That be handled in the fence permit or?
Um, you can condition it upon the type of fence and, um, I will make sure that the survey, we get the survey before issuing the permit.
Okay. Phil, is there any questions?
No, it's good.
No question.
Okay. Uh, so enter these findings, whether whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or the detriment of nearby properties, uh, will be created by, uh, granting this variance. Um, I don't think so based on the layout of the property. I think the, the height variance, uh, will be absorbed. Um, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue um, any other type of variance. Um, I think they could comply with the three and a half foot variance. However, I don't think that's gonna satisfy what their need is, so I think the four-foot is acceptable. Uh, whether the variance is substantial, I don't think it is, uh, based on the size of the property. Um, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the or impact on the physical environment or conditions. There's no evidence as such. And whether the, uh, the variance is self-created, uh, yes, it is, but um, this is kind of what they're working with from the layout of the property, so I have those findings.
Can I just, uh, one thing, I just want to make sure it's clear. It's a four and a half foot tall fence, so it's a one-foot variance, right? But, you know, it's not four feet tall, it's forty.
Okay, thank you. Art, you want to enter that in with the?
Okay. I moved that the board approved the request for area variance set forth on item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. Approving this variance or adopts, that's set forth by the chair.
And condition. And conditioned upon the.
Initially, the condition that it is the very, the same or very similar open, uh, aluminum fencing that's pictured in this application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carries. That moves us through number eight. Um, and there is a staff report on this. This is enlisted action, so we need to. Yeah, uh, so I moved the zoning board to determine that there are no other uh, involved agencies and declare itself as the lead agency for this action. Any favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, I moved that the zoning board determined that this action would have no significant adverse impacts on the environment. Uh, and issue a neg- negative, negative declaration. Second, for favor?
Aye.
So that motion carries. Um, I think from the staff, we're feeling highlight. It's just, was there any alternatives that were seeked out? We sought out or sizes. Um, I think we've asked them the questions. So I submit the staff report as findings.
Yes, I moved that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing when it signs the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that motion carry? Only other thing is a request for lead agency, uh, from the planning board. Like you.
Sure, it's very quick. And this is over the Pipsy Day School. They're looking to create three lots out of the one lot. Um, the primary purpose, at least initially, is that they would like to sell, um, the, uh, the Kenyon House, which is the, uh, the beautiful old building in the front, uh, to a different party. Um, it's going to be, uh, well, without getting into the details of who it's gonna be, but they, they, they have a potential purchaser, so that's, that's the purpose of the subdivision. Um, the third lot will contain the fields for the time being. I think it'll stay with the school, but in the future, they may also sell that to this entity that's purchasing the Kenyon. Yeah, that's about it. It may need a variance here or there, so we figured, uh, you know, let's make sure to get the lead AMC.
Is there still a solar farm on that property?
There is still a solar farm on the property, yeah. And that's, uh, that's behind the, the, the main school building, yeah, yeah.
Any questions? I move that the zoning board, where lead agents need to the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carry? And, um, I move to adjourn the September meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carry? Thank you.
All right, thanks everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.